We are live.
Okay, welcome back everybody online. We are in the afternoon session of July seventeenth. We have just come out of an executive session for employee valuation with no action taken. Our next agenda item is a workshop to discuss options for Valley County employee housing. So I know Kirby has been kind of helping us with this issue and we've got some guests today, so I will turn it over to you.
Kirby, let me give you a microphone.
Oh, here. Right here.
Kirby, I can kick it off.
You guys are assuming that I want to be on record.
You want this one too, Sherry? Go up here and grab this one. It's got a lot of court, but I could help you go out.
It's kind of nuts. I got a loud voice too, so. Kirby and I, we can be fine.
So commissioners, first of all, thank you for taking some time to listen to some possible solutions to the issues that I continually hear. I wanted to just put together a brief presentation that I sent in on the seventeenth that should be in your packets. You know, as I talk with with Jeff and his road department, the weed department, law enforcement, sheriff's department, our first responders EMS and fire folks that are somewhat involved with at the county level now too. You know, the continuing refrain that we hear is that we can't get help. We can't hire people. And, you know, I've heard that same conversation amongst the commissioners and various conversations we've had. You know, last, last conversation with Commissioner Mopin, I think she told me we had something like eleven or twelve vacant spots and the primary issue that we're struggling with is we have no housing. The marketplace doesn't provide housing at a rate either that is affordable or there just is no inventory available, which is not off the mark. Commissioners have all heard me on the record express my displeasure with the idea of taxpayer funding housing, particularly into the private sector. Getting involved in that process in general is problematic and troublesome for me. This fundamentally, however, all that being said, I spent a lot of time mulling this over and trying to come up with a better solution because I usually don't like to complain unless I bring a solution. And the only solution that I can come up with that is reasonably going to help us solve this housing issue and be able to recruit people to the county as employees to do the jobs that as taxpayers we need them to do is to provide a housing solution. You know, from my point of view, commissioner's primary job, day in and day out, and county government's primary job, just at the fundamental baseline level, is health and safety. If we can't get EMS or fire or the law enforcement community to a site because we don't have staffing, that's a problem. If we can't clean the roads, repair the roads because we don't have staffing because of the housing issue, that's a problem. Although I, because of some other underlying issues I've been dealing with the last week or so, I've not had an opportunity to review the MOU that the commissioners, I believe, passed with the housing trust last week, which is fine. The initial conversation, I'm assuming the MOU includes this, as they do on sale clause, if the housing trust were to sell those three units they're going to build. But the primary hook when that funding source was discussed was that the county would have first right of refusal to put employees in those units, which without being critical is still a disingenuous argument on behalf of funding that money to the private trust for the simple fact that you and all, everybody in this room is aware that there's a waiting list for every rental that's out there that's a mile long. And the only way that the commissioners and the county will reasonably be able to take advantage of first right of refusal is that the day the CFO has issued on those three units, taxpayers get to start paying rent on those units and enter into a lease on behalf of the county, whether we have somebody to move into them or not. Otherwise, if we don't exercise our first right of refusal, lease those units as a county, as taxpayers, whether we have tenants form or not, then the next people in line will be able to move in and will lose that opportunity. It's just the nature of the marketplace. Anybody that owns real estate, particularly investment real estate, will recognize that that's the way it is. So, so the assumption is that the plan is not to start funding taxpayer money out of the county budget, start renting these three units the day they become available to market to exercise our first right of refusal, that at some point down the road, if one of those become vacant and we have somebody, that that may be an option for us. In the meantime, we gotta find out how, we gotta figure out how to put heads in beds so we can recruit employees. So, reason for my, my proposal here today really simply is that we own ground. As the county, we own ground, we own ground, Lake Fork, we own a piece of ground at the pit to south of Donley. We own ground down here at the fairgrounds, we own ground south of town down at the pit. And there's probably stuff floating around that, or behind the jail over here as well. Those are just the, the primary ones that come to mind. You know, as I, as I weed through this and I watch kind of what happens with people transitioning in here, the lady that's managing the gas station, Donley is a perfect example. Charlie that owns a gas station rented a space in the chalet, rented an RV from my neighbor and they moved into it till they could find a permanent place to rent. So, a lot of these needs are sort of transitory and transitional. They may involve an RV spot, they may actually involve the need for, for an actual building of some sort for people to live in. But we have, we have a road department that has excavation, backfill, compaction and asphalt skills. If they can, if Jeff tells us they can do a road, they can sure do pad sites. And that's not a low level, highest and best use issue in my mind for the time for our road department and trying to help in gap periods get some of these things done. So, you know, ultimately, my recommendation is based around sustainability and repeatability. And that involves taking ground we own, going in, doing an analysis of what would be necessary, what would be viable, number one. How many units can we put here? The one in Cascade is probably going to fall under City of Cascade rules, so we're gonna have to figure something out there and see what City of Cascade and the county can cooperate on. Ones out in the county, less so. But my recommendation is that we look at building pad sites for RVs, number one, with hookups that our summer folks, like our waterways, law enforcement guys that are transitioning in and out of here during the summer months could put their RVs on. But as part of that, I'm looking at a longer term, more permanent solution for actual units. And if we can take the sites we have that are developed already, presumably with some, with power sources already on site, or we wouldn't be there operating. Some sort of existing sewage, whether it be septic or potentially dropping in a tank that can be pumped and whatever water sources we already have on site, build pads. Part of that be RV pads that we can lease to our temporary summer folks. But the bigger picture is to bring in some sort of a housing unit that we can put on those sites, stabilize, provide services. And those sites can be part of our recruitment package for people that are coming in. We can't afford to live there, we can't find a rental, we can't accept the job. We have a site, we have a building that will sleep husband, wife and a kid. Here's where it's at. Here's what the rent is. We can set our rents. The rents come back to the county, they pay for operating expenses to a property management company, so we're not adding layers of administration into this process. We just contract with them, rents pay them, the rest goes back into this initiated pool so that as the county grows, our needs for housing grow, we have a pool of funds that are, is self-sustaining to go out and repeat this process. I think we have the skill sets, we have the talent, we have funds sitting here that have come back to the, to the county from taxpayers that paid to the federal government and various other resources that have come back here and are on the ground now that could fund this process. And I think it's a much more appropriate use of taxpayer money to actually have the county own assets that will allow us to recruit employees, house those employees, to provide the services necessary to protect health and safety of the people that are here. Add all that together with sustainability, repeatability, and if we can put that together, that would be something that I would be supportive of doing despite my misgivings about having government involved in housing. So, full disclosure, Jason, Shawna and Joe are here. They're gonna talk to you, full disclosure, I don't have a business relationship. I don't have a dog in the hat in their business. I met with Jason and Shawna, they had a tiny house down here at Tackle Tom's. Just happened to stop in there, I was impressed with the structure, I was impressed with the engineering process they've gone through to basically build everything they build to meet Valley County code. So they're already over the hump on the engineering aspects. They have solutions for temporary foundations for their units. They have kind of a pretty broad solution as far as the cost of some of the units. And I just asked them to be part of this meeting so that they could kind of give the commissioners an idea of, of what they could do to meet this need if, if the commissioners would like to take this and run with it. So, that I.
It'd be good if I passed this stuff around.
Just to kind of bring up to speed my background, so I'm Joe Critchfield and so I bought Arrowhead Park a couple of years ago. I moved my family up here, I saw a need right when I went through the first winter and saw my mobile home park. And I'm like, how do people live in the winter in an RV or a mobile home of this nature? So I, I, before I moved up here, I was already working with Jason and Shawna. I owned some wedding venues in Boise that I was kind of looking to do some bungalow type settings and rent these out for when people would come and with their wedding overnight. Over there off Shadow Valley Golf Course, the old A-frame I had, I sold off before I came up here. And so I've been vetting out different various manufacturers just to find the right products. So I've been working with iDecore Homes for the last three, three and a half, four years. Ideally, their product is, is the best match for Valley County due to all the components that come with their structures. I've been working with the City of Cascade to improve the mobile home park and bring a hundred and forty of these units in for workforce. Some of you know, I acquired the whistle stop, I also have the tackle toms. And there's a constant need from all the workforce of, hey, do you have a rental? Hey, I need to find a new place. And the way people are living right now in Cascade is definitely need to be improved. It just has to. And so I've kind of taken the initiative myself to just find a remedy to, to the issues right now. I'm not partnering with any government money, it's just myself and my wife doing all of this, trying the best we can to fill a need. So, Arrowhead Park, I've been working, we're finalizing our development agreement with the city, with the city attorney so we can move forward with this, I'll be working with Granite Excavation to do the infrastructure. Hopefully, ideally, we plan on September, doing the infrastructure on that horizontal work. And then by, when snow melts next year, the timeline of putting together these homes are very minimal. That's why I started a construction business as well, Cascade Renovation Guys, to go ahead to be able to erect all of these in a short amount of time so that by minimizing the time and putting these up, we now have heads in a home right away. I understand there's over fifteen hundred people without roofs over their heads in Valley County. I'm trying to do the best I can with the city. And then that's why by, by buying tackle toms, I put one on chassis just on display because I plan on doing a bunch of chassis in my RV park as well, just as all year round rentals. And so when Kirby saw that one, he's like, wait a minute, Joe's tied into this thing as well. And so he's like, give me more information. So that's where I wanted to bring Shawna and Jason to the table. They have a wealth of knowledge when it comes to this type of product. And my construction crew can put these things together probably in about two days. And the way we can do this in two days, you know, depending on financing or if there is financing, these things can be erected so fast and they're energy efficient, radiant heating floors, R thirty-eight insulation, steel studs, a hundred and fifty pound snow loads. So this really is, you know, real property and by putting them on these Goliath pillars, they become real property. They can be financed, once it's on real property, however you'd like to put these. And so I want to turn it over to Jason just to kind of talk a little bit about the product itself because I feel like it fits such a huge need here, not only with the timeline purposes but also just with the product itself of what you're able to offer, you know, workforce as well as just potential employees.
Thanks, Joe. I really appreciate you guys giving me the time. And as Commissioner Mopin may remember, we started this process about four years ago. And the big thing that we set out with our company to do is being a local Idahoan is I knew what our needs were. I knew that we needed to have strong snow loads, I needed to have better insulation than anything else because it gets cold in, in Valley County. And I wanted it to where it was also really low maintenance and something that we could also save on construction time because we know construction, construction costs are just through the roof. And so the less, the less hands that need to touch it, the faster we can get it done. So a lot of our homes, we can build approximately sixty of our kits a month right now. Erection time on site's about three to fifteen days to get them done on site. One of the things that Joe brought up was about our Goliath pillar systems. What's really nice about that is this screw pile system that each one of them holds about thirty-six thousand pounds. And it can be done in any weather. So that way, if it's, you know, if the temperature's cold, as long as it snows off it, you can get, you can just drill it down. As soon as it gets eleven thousand pounds of torque, we cut it off at the height they need and then we just put our strong ties down and we start building our chassis on top of that. So, and it just makes it, and what's also really nice about it is also, let's say you need to move it for whatever reason. We can unbolt them, move the unit and then unscrew the pile so it's reusable. And it only takes a few hours to install that foundation. Plus, you're not excavating, digging a hole, putting the dirt somewhere, then sending forms and all that. It just speeds up the whole process, plus it's about three thousand dollars for a foundation versus fifteen thousand dollars for a foundation.
Totally winter, you know, I mean, they survive winter, no problems like you get with an RV with things freezing underneath.
Correct, yeah, we'll have proper insulation. When we do them, we'll do the siding on site, so it'll actually be just like a crawl and that'll be all insulated so you won't have a problem with your sewer, your water, that sort of thing on that.
The cost of concrete, we may have to do this with regular homes.
They actually do a lot of regular homes, the Goliath systems, they do all over the place.
And they're certified in state of Idaho and Utah.
It's a real foundation, it just looks different and is way more efficient and way less money.
Yeah, and especially for like waterway, you know, water table areas and that sort of thing. You just go down and until this engineer calls out for the spec, it's whatever torque it needs required for that, that load. And then they just put it on there. They're great guys, they're out of Idaho Falls. We did one in Jerome the other day, it took them two and a half hours to do the foundation. In and out. No mess.
And the city's on board with this type of product because it gets out of the floodplain zone on Arrowhead. That way, we're lifting it up, so water just goes underneath the house, worst case scenario. And it doesn't affect at all the crawl space, doesn't affect the roof structure or the integrity.
So you can build pads and lift them up if you want.
Yeah, and so our, our floor foundation is a two by six box frame. And so what it's, when you just put those strong ties together, it just pulls through the, through that. And our floor insulation's R thirty-nine inside of that chassis.
Floor is steel as long, as well as the walls.
Yeah, and that's the other thing is all of our siding, everything we use, I'm really about, I don't want to screw with it. So it's like we use an aluminum siding that has insulation in behind it so you can't dent it or, you know, like a lot of vinyls and that will dent in. Then we use radiant insulation, so because steel you get a bad radiant transfer through. So we did a closed cell foam with insulation, reflective insulation, so there's no way that it's a true R thirty-eight or R thirty-two wall. And so when we're, when Joe and I have just kind of been building the scene together, us going through our engineering, trying to get all this put together, we're like, the only way to make this happen is if we come in at value, he's coming in at value on his construction side of it. Because there was a time when I couldn't, there's no way I could get builders to do it. He's, he's doing it for a very inexpensive price to, so we can keep the value down so it's affordable, you know, for the county or for the city to do it. Because if we try to make fifty thousand dollars profit on each one of these houses, well then now they're not affordable. That's the, and we just feel that if we can do this, then we can repeat it over and over because there isn't a city in our state that doesn't have this trouble.
Well, I think the issue that we have is the ground, a lot of the ground we have is impercable. Side up at Lake Fork, Sherry did a study here two years ago, just about an eighty acre field out there and it all came back with super high water. You have the recycle center and the county shop there, and so there's a higher chunk of ground there that might work for like our waterway stepedies that we need in the summertime. The big issue is going to be sewer, septic.
We do have a small solution for that, which is there is some maintenance costs, but you can tank them as well like an RV with black and gray water tanks if you can't do this, have a septic issue.
And we do also out of North Carolina, just, we're looking at a project in worship bend. And it's, it looks like a big shipping container and it's all self-contained. And to go from, it goes from sewer to potable is the most expensive and it comes out about fourteen bucks a gallon. So let's say each one of those, you know, let's say we do ten units, each unit's a hundred gallons a day. So you've got a thousand, thousand gallons, so it comes out to fourteen grand is what it would cost for the actual unit. And then whatever the piping and stuff, so you can, it's made for.
I've been hearing about those, that's interesting.
Really?
I'm interested, have you guys done any research work on what central district health will allow?
We have just started with it, I just found these guys about two months ago. And his, his daughter actually lives in Eagle and so they're working on a project right now. And so, he said any compliance with that, he's already got the engineers and the, that will deal with that directly. And you know, the Department of Health.
Well, and that's gonna be an issue because we have a lot of concrete tanks up here in the valley that I think in a few more years are gonna be out a lot as well because they break, they crack, they leak or they don't get pumped. And I'm on the health district board and so there's been a lot of discussion about limiting those to be in high water tables because they're not working.
Yeah.
And a lot of it is a maintenance issue. Me, that would be another solution that we can do is, you know, a big two thousand gallon tank for a couple of units and then once or twice a month or whatever, you gotta pump it out.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe just put like a little heating element or something in it or put it inside of a, you know, we could do a left pump and a little heated, you know, crap house.
And then I think, Sherry, somebody had a great idea that maybe we could, like at the Lake Fork shop, we could pump it up to our septic system. Because that county shop there's not used that much, that system is not overwhelmed with a lot of use. So, that's another idea. As you guys know, we have ground across the street from the jail.
Oh, yeah.
Two or three homes back in there that we've remodeled and kind of cleaned up and we're renting those out now. But I think there's a, there's actually another half a block behind it. Alley, so to speak, there's a couple of old buildings that we would need to tear down. But if we make more room in that, there should be all city sewer and water and we could probably put, I don't know, five, six, seven back there.
Right, and that's seen, that's kind of what, that's why having Joe and I together on this is good. What I did isn't like, that way he can do all the excavation, he can do demolition, he can do all of that side. And I just come in with the product to be able to work with him to speed up the process. And, you know, I think it's, what we're trying to do is really have a solution that somebody hasn't been able to come up with. And I think we're fine, I mean, from where we started four years ago, we finally started to check all the boxes to get this thing figured out.
Well, it is great, Jason.
It is great, we have a, it's a plan in place that's just going to be presented to us. So, I don't know what that looks like.
I thought we don't either yet.
You know, that, that would not be as important to me because I don't know if that's highest and best use for a one or two bedroom. I mean, that might be something that is something else.
We're actually looking for more like a two-story, bigger complex over there.
And we can do those too.
We can do those as well, and so we can do multi-family with the same product. You can go a couple of stories high with the same type of product and minimize that cost. You're at about sixty dollars a foot when you do it multiple stories. That, what's that?
Yep, for materials.
Just materials, and since you guys have the land. And so, and then we can come in and just erect it all. So if you want best use for the small amount of land, yeah, you can go high. But if it doesn't align itself with the city and with all the different housing around it, then we would use this type of product.
Well, you know, Joe, what we've noticed, and I didn't, wasn't really watching until Brian, our prosecutor, brought it to me just in here a year or two ago, but if you have a one-bedroom rental, you usually get the single folks. Come up, get a job, come up and move into it and immediately they're looking for another job. We need to encourage more family size development so that they bring the kids up, the kids get into school and they start, they stay here.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
All of our units come in two bedrooms. I mean, they're still way smaller space, but they're all two bedrooms, two bath and two bedroom, one bath. But that's just a newer exterior, so we added that one up there, but these tend to be easier to see what the two bedrooms look like.
And we're also working on another one, which is based off of the Cabarton six twenty-four model two-bedroom that we're going to be doing with a gable roof instead of the shed. So we can put a loft above that, which would then make it a fully functional three-bed.
And this hedge model is one of our smaller ones, but that one also, we just redesigned that one with a loft, so there's more sleeping up there.
I think that there's multiple opportunities, you know, to capture different family sizes to come and work. I, I think as far as the county, I'm, I'm all in on housing. Kirby and I might disagree on how we get there, but I'm all in on housing. And.
That's right, my wife disagrees with me a lot too, so.
And I disagree with her a lot too.
I'm the disagreeable one, you guys just heard us. Yes, you do. Whatever we can do, I think is, you know, really key and critical. We do have some opportunities, one-time funding. We're looking at, we're supposed to be having this key planning document back here in the next month or two. So the county's gonna have lots of information in front of us so that we can inform ourselves on the best way to spend a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with federal funds that are coming back. I think housing is absolutely at the top. But we did a survey, we had four hundred and seventy respondents and housing was number one. We, so we have to hit different marks, you know, we need some family units, we need some singles, we need some two bedrooms. The most important thing is, is where we can put them. I mean, the county does have ground and if it doesn't perk, then maybe it's time to look at that county ground and say, we need to swap it for somewhere else or, you know, is this the, the best that the county can do with this piece? I don't know. We have to go through CUPs on everything that we do, so there's a time limitation on what we do there. But if you look at the opportunities that we have, the road department obviously is at a good lane. There was a home there, there's already a well, there's a septic, there's power. We could literally put something on there, at least one, right now. You know, put a two-bedroom up there, see if we can help some of the road guys out this winter. Gold Dust, we're going to be remodeling, that's, you know, again, that's a little iffy until we can have a plan, a footprint of that whole area and there's high water there. Lake Fork didn't perk, but I was trying to do density there. So it will take one or two acres and put a septic on it. But again, do we really, we don't want to sell it at that, you know, maybe it is an opportunity just to put some units on it that we can move in the future, so it's a temporary type deal, you know, put one on every acre or something like that. So there is some opportunities there to do septics, it's just.
Well, I, I'm sorry, but if, if Lake Fork and the septic's an issue, then we go up there and put pad sites in and do a holding tank that we pump for RVs.
That's great. CDH allows, do you?
I mean, you know, in, in my mind, we take our sites, we figure out highest and best use and, and infrastructure availability and viability, and then we make a plan and we execute it. Going back to the one-time blessing of money to the county, the one thing I'd like to reiterate is that if you guys create a fund for employee, county employee housing, that fund is sustainable. If you put a half a million dollars in there and you buy, you know, we do, we, we buy two units and put them somewhere and those two units are paying rent back to that fund, that fund will eventually pay for two more units, right? So, that's issue number one. Issue number two that I neglected to bring up is that, you know, despite the foundation piece of this, you know, I, I don't see a tremendous value to the county in converting these assets to a real property asset. I think they're better as personal property assets for a couple of reasons. One, you know, I think it's easier to pick them up and move them to a new site if we keep them as a, as a titled asset for lack of a better way to put it, personal property. And number two, as you guys know, we can go out to the marketplace and buy a grader or a dump truck or a fire. or a dump truck or a fire truck or using municipal leasing. And I believe as a funding resource for this type of asset, this type of a building. That if it remains non-converted to real property. That we could probably make a case in the, in the greater banking market for municipal leasing funding as an option for these units. Which would allow you to buy, you know, earmark, earmark a million dollars, we go in and do an improvement. Um, to our, to our infrastructure and maybe we buy ten. And we fund part of it with capital or we use the capital that we're marking as the initial thirty percent investment. And then you fund the balance of it out of budget for the next three or four years. Um, as a, as a longer-term capitalization model to make this sustainable. So you get the units on the ground today, wherever we elect to put them, actually take action, get this done. Go out, let's look for municipal leasing funds, document what we've got. Have, have the, have, have our budget next year reflect payments on that, whatever that turns out to be. And get, get something bought and, and, and I, you know, I wouldn't have asked these folks to come here today with me. Had I not done a little research and felt like their option was viable, it may not be the only option. Um, there may be others out there that, that the commissioners would wanna look into. Um, all that said, um, I think it's time if we're, if we're, if we're really serious about this and the, and the people in the county listed housing as number one. Without any underlying caveats in the discussion when they filled out that, uh, survey. Um, in my mind, as a taxpayer, I'd rather have us be able to hire a sheriff's deputy. Or somebody to run a grader so that the snow can get off the road in a timely manner. Um, and, and have my taxpayers supporting that purpose. For me and my neighbors, for the commissioners themselves and everybody else that lives in this county. Than, than rolling the dice and hoping we have availability of three units that we're gonna be building here shortly. Um, through the housing trust and, you know, I, Sherry will tell you, I'm a supporter of the housing trust. I'm, you know, I, I'm, I'm a believer in that part of the system. I've dealt with housing trusts in the Wood River Valley, housing trusts in Park City. Um, and it's, it's an important and necessary part. I'm just not personally supportive of taxpayers paying for that outside entity to build housing. At least at this point under the model that we're currently using there. Um, and that's a discussion for another day. Um, I'm concerned about the fact that I'm driving the roads in the county as a member of the road advisory board. And they are not getting patched. Period. I mean, they're not getting patched, um, we're gonna have a road advisory board meeting here in a couple of weeks, I think. Um, and that's a, that's gonna be a point of discussion and part of it is because of staffing. Um, you know, uh, and sitting and, and dealing with the fire, the fire chiefs on their impact fee board. Um, and the fire department's gonna have, the fire districts are gonna have to handle their own solutions. But I'm gonna sit down, uh, and discuss this very same option. Because Garrett told me that they think they maybe will find somebody to donate some land. Um, they feel like they can develop capital raising campaign. And they need to put together some sort of a housing structure to be able to recruit and retain employees. This is a solution for that problem. Um, I don't think we can, I don't think we can afford to talk about it long-term. I think we need to kick, get in gear and as, and I'm here as a private citizen because I'm not hearing people present solutions that are sustainable, repeatable, um, and doable today. And this is mine, it doesn't make it right. Um, but if I were sitting in your chair, this would be one I'd be seriously considering.
Ravi, they, uh, because I've talked to Garrett and actually Dallas too, we're both kinda colluding on that. Would it be something that they would own, structures, they wouldn't be selling up?
Yeah, I.
They would own for their people.
Yeah, I think, you know, and, and this was this passing conversation Garrett and I had after one of the impact fee meetings that, that we were involved in. Um, you know, they, you know, the fire districts are, are, with the exception of the EMS issues, sort of their own thing. Um, but they're, they're fighting the same battles. I mean, we, we know where we're at as far as the EMS issues with commissioners, that's, you know. Pretty old news at this point. And part of that, part of those expenses and costs are related to being able to put heads in beds. Um, and provide the level of service necessary to, to hit calls. So, you know, I guess the long story short with me is I look at the, I look at the fire districts as, as despite the fact that they serve the county. Um, I look at them as their own independent, um, problem-solving entities. That we can sit down and, and, and try to find solutions and mirror whatever we do here. Um, but, you know, part, part of my frustration, guys, is that I keep hearing, well, so-and-so in this place did this and so-and-so in that place did that. And, you know, I, I recognize Valley County has changed a lot. Um, all of this has been around a while. Um, but we're not Sun Valley. Despite what we look, you know, despite the direction we see it going, we are not Ketchum, Sun Valley, Peoples Republic, Blaine County yet. Um, we are not Park City yet, but we're on our way there. And the trouble we have, and, and I've done a lot of business in those places, so I, I refer to those as, as sort of baseline things that I wanna help us avoid becoming on some levels. Um, we're, we're heading towards that, that type of occupancy base and employee issues. We've got a lot of their same problems now at probably a little bit lower level than they do. But I'm tired of hearing about what they did because we're not there yet. And I think we have an opportunity to get ahead of the curve, create our own model that works here, that could be sustainable and repeatable on other places in the country. And actually lead with a good idea instead of constantly trying to figure out what everybody else did. When everybody else is at a different phase in their, their, uh, maturation as markets, um, than we are today. And, and budget-wise, I'm, I'm sorry, but Valley County doesn't have the same budget as Blaine County. And they certainly don't have the same budget as the county that Park City or Vail sit in. Um, so we have some different things that we have to contend with. And I don't know that what they're doing in those other places are viable here at this point. Until we start having the level of capital injection via basically donations from our wealthy citizens here towards solving these issues and, and more of a charitable support base than we have. We don't have that yet. They have it in Ketchum. I just went through a project in Ketchum that changed a thirty-two unit. Um, assisted living facility into housing units in Haley. Um, and the people that ended up, uh, taking over that facility there, um, did it because they want someplace for the guys to take care of, that take care of their golf course to live so that they can keep playing golf at Valley Club. Right? So, uh, until we have that.
Where's all their old people gonna go?
They're, they were gone.
They don't play golf.
They'd, they'd already, they'd already moved out, El. Um, um, and it's a long story, but, but ultimately until we have a, an economic base of citizens here that see the world from that point of view. The relying on, um, charitable contributions to the housing trust and some of these other things is gonna be um, a growth issue that, that the various people that are involved in the housing trust are gonna have to work on. Um, that's why they need a sustainable, good, solid board of people that have good connections, good, you know, good marketing and sales skills and, and, you know, and, and I have a high level of confidence in the people that are there now. Um, for the most part, um, so like I said, I'm, I'm not here to diminish what they're doing. I'm here to say that, that as a county, as, as commissioners, I think that we have to look at this in parallel to what the housing trust and some of the various other private enterprise options are. With an eye towards taking care of the people that we need here, working for the taxpayer first and foremost.
You guys, so.
So.
Have you guys looked at, I mean, seriously looked at some of the land that county owns, possibility of sites?
I, I have not gone that far Neil and, and honestly, I, um, I put this together kinda last minute, this had been in planning. We had some other stuff in our family planning, plan going on and then we had, uh, my father passed away, so. Uh, I've not been out doing a survey of county property aside from the roads that I've been trying to fall into potholes on.
We have.
It's about as far as I made it, so, but I'm more than happy. If the commissioners get serious about this.
I really appreciate all the work, but end of this, and I think there's probably gonna be more down the road. Um, couple of ideas that keep popping back into my mind. First of all, Jason, you have, you have two models, thirty-two by sixteen, thirty-eight by sixteen, is that right?
Well, we, we actually have a, we actually have a twenty, uh, twenty-three by thirteen.
This one right here.
This, yeah, this is our hedge, so, yeah, so that one's actually, well, it's actually twenty-nine with the deck on it and that's thirteen feet wide. Our newer version of this has a loft in it, so it has a full bedroom plus a loft.
A loft. I'm more interested in like the two-bedroom so we can pull.
Okay, yep, so that would be in our.
What do they run setup?
Brian, before you go, I have questions for you really quick, so don't leave.
So you're looking at it like, on that one, like for.
Well, it's on the pack, I didn't even look, sorry.
Sorry, yeah, double printed on that, so, um, why are Cabarton units, and this one I have the one-bedroom in there, so you're probably gonna be looking at about five thousand more. But you're about ninety-six thousand to, to a hundred and one thousand for those.
This is the two-bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
And we, when we talked to Kirby originally, we kind of talked about, obviously, we made all of them look like they could be here. And this more basic one still fits that bill, but it's, you know, not pricing.
Well, my next question is to Joe.
Yeah.
If the county were to lease these or buy them and lease some of your spaces, would that be an option?
Absolutely, so I've, I've got a hundred and forty-five right here that I'm putting together. I'm putting this product on the river pillars and then I'm putting these up on right here. I'm only selling, I was thinking about selling about fifty to make it true affordable for around two hundred thousand with the land for local Cascade.
Well, you're gonna sell, I was just thinking leasing land.
No, but I, but I've got, I'll retain the other hundred, we could look at leasing those out to the county as well.
Do you have any idea what you'd be looking for for a lease on an annual basis for one of these?
We could work something out.
The reason I say that is because I think there's gonna come a point down the road, especially with some of the development that's been showing up the last month or so as far as rental market. That we may decide that, okay, we have, we're oversaturated now, we don't need these. I can sell them to Joe or I can pick them up and hold them up and sell them to somebody else.
Absolutely, and I'd be willing to sell some of them to the county as well if you want, at, at, with the land, with the unit, with everything. Cause I really wanted to sell and give back and that's my thing back to the mayor is, you know, it'll be the least expensive product in all of Cascade for a brand-new everything with the land included. And, and I wanted to find out, I was trying to raise an affordable housing fund to then be able to underwrite all these people who then can get loans to have that real property in place. Yeah, I'd be definitely open to working with the county on, on setting aside multiple of these if you wanted to purchase, lease them, we can definitely work together.
So it kinda negates the purpose of having something in perpetuity that county owns, which is what Kirby's process is. So purchasing would be a little more advantageous to me. But also maybe we look at some of those other properties that we own, that we could sell those, buy these because they're in a better location. But my concern is, is then you're concentrated all in Cascade and that's, we are a regional community. We need to make sure that we have something in Donley and something in McCall and so that we're not just here. Um, but certainly.
I'm sure Joe would love to trade some of this potable, perkable ground with units on it for some of the gravel pits we have where he can't put a septic.
Yeah.
Oh, that could be interesting.
Love a big dance floor.
Brian, if we buy something like this.
Another wedding than you would know.
Or do we have to do an RFP because the cost associated with it? Or because we own it, we don't have to?
I, I, I don't know definitively, I'd need to look into that, it's an interesting question. I mean, typically you're, you are required to put an RFP out for any public works project that's over fifty thousand. I just don't know if this meets the definition of a public works project, so.
We would wanna look at that.
Buy them, but if you were to lease them.
I think that would be even more of a concern.
So, so the, when I talk about lease, El, when I'm talking about a municipal lease, the way those work is you put, let's say you do a five-year term. So when you buy, when you take that asset delivered, you, you pay twenty percent down. And each year you pay another declining twenty percent until the fifth year you stroke your last check. And the county owns the asset with no residual or anything left. So it's, it's, it's like a, it's, it's a, call it municipal lease, there's some benefits to the parties because of taxation issues and things with the lenders. But, but ultimately, we're buying that asset as the county.
Well, these perches.
It's whether we write one check or five, it doesn't.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, but I, I.
The difference is you can budget for it and spread it.
We're gonna get by any cheaper than going to Joe's place, it already has all the facilities, sewer, water, electric, everything we need. Already put in the ground, whereas we're trying to go out and stuff this in a road department backyard, I don't know if we can do it any cheaper.
Yes, I'd say it's already ready right now, like we had ten there, built them, we rented tomorrow.
Cause I, you know, with some of the product, like the product I have at Tackle Toms, that's on a chassis. You can actually have your roll-away, uh, septic and just go and dump it in my park and pop it back in. You've got water and I have full hookups and everything, so, um, I mean, I already have that set up.
Keep thinking about Chippy Chase of the Fourth of July parade where they're dragging the Volkswagen septic tank out. Seen that happen.
That was before my time, I never saw that.
Yeah, right.
I don't think I did. I've heard a lot about it though.
So I guess what we need to do is we need to figure out some way we can go out and look at our property. We have another, what is it, nine-acre site right down the end of that round valley where the highway curves. There's nine-acre site there behind that state pile of rock and.
Right.
ATD has asked us not to do anything with that, we didn't talk with them.
We've, we talked about doing a rest area and it's like, well, let's just trade to the state.
We have seven acres in McCall though, that's very advantageous, we have.
Which would be a huge area in McCall because of what's going on with them closing down the mobile home park, they're trying to migrate their mobile homes over to mine. And then in the process of doing this, it would be too short-term, you know, and so they're losing a lot of workforce up in McCall right now because there's just no place to live, so they're living in Cascade to work in McCall, which I'm sure you guys are apprised of.
But I think as far as, as far as county government, the county seats here, I think if they're gonna work in this facility, they oughta live in Cascade. I mean, I mean, that's cheap as you can make it.
That's commute.
That's if they can walk across the street.
However, I wanna live in McCall and I wanna work for the county.
Sorry, you can't do that, we don't want you.
So therefore. Then if we do something temporarily, I'm sorry, let me ask one question. If we do something temporarily, put something temporarily on the Lake Fork site, we still have to do a CUP, correct? Okay.
And that was attempted, what, quite a few years ago? And wasn't there a subdivision or something proposed for that, some of that ground? I know we had a hard time getting the recycling center through, got a lot of conditions of approval, but.
No, um, there, there was never a large part of subdivision or any council proposed there. It was just Commissioner Moffin's, uh, study of the area for the central, there were the septic systems. Um, because it was, it's always that eighty acres has just been a gravel pit.
Yeah.
Unmined gravel pit.
Unmined. Well, shoot.
We have a copy of all of the county sites, we could get together and talk about that. And what would be highest and best use, but I, I think it is interesting, you know, to do this. And, but I also disagree, I don't think that all should be in Cascade. We are regional, I will support my region of McCall, you should be supporting your region of Donley.
We should do at least five here first because that's, I mean, you were short right now, well, it's more like six or seven.
And we're about sixty days out on kids. And we're about sixty days out on kits. Where we're at for supplying materials.
Where's that?
This?
Where's that at?
This is Arrowhead Park. Yeah, so I'd like to see this.
Next to the river.
Side of town, across from.
Yeah, just kitty corner of the river district.
Did you buy the other side of it too?
No.
Not, not back where dolls are?
Uh, yeah.
You know my girl, Harry?
Oh, yeah.
He's been living with you for quite a few years.
Oh, conflict of interest, yeah.
I mean, I don't know who he is.
Never heard of him. I have a lot of people staying in Arrowhead right now. Everybody from the valley comes up in here and spends the summer.
There's good feedback there. I've been trying to improve it from where it was before.
How many of these little homes you talking about putting on?
Hundred and forty-two.
At, at these guys?
Yeah, these cabartons.
Is it all in that orange spot?
Correct.
How many spots you already have for RVs?
RVs, I have a hundred and twenty-four full hookups.
And you'll leave those intact?
I'm gonna lose some of those hookups, but I'm gonna replace those hookups with the ones on chassis, like you see over there at Tackle Toms. And so even though I lose some RVs, I'll have now year-round rentals. Cause traditionally before Arrowhead was always closed during winter. When I bought it, I'm like, well, let's just see how we do during winter. I mean, and I got a lot of workforce in there and it wasn't the best living situation for them, but they had no other option. And then I'd get contractors in, so I figured if I can have this year-round option to be able to rent them out, not just as Airbnbs, but as rentals as well. It keeps them safe, keeps their family safe and it gives them a different situation that is reasonable.
We had two of our road guys that were out in the middle of the night unthawing pipes this year because they were living in their RVs and it's just, it's just.
So if you already got this idea, you're just.
So we're doing our development agreement right now with the city attorney and my attorney. Yeah, I thought we presented this. We did our pre-construction meeting. The, the whole city's on board. They're loving this product. They love the whole, uh, the whole thing behind it, so.
They love the mountain momma. Definitely my preference.
Well, I like this idea. This really.
This is in Jackson Hole.
Similar, yeah. That's when we, we originally copied, that's where I got the idea from it. And those are.
Pictures and brought them back.
Oh, they're beautiful. And see, and those are only ten feet wide. The ours are sixteen, so we just went with that look and made it feel.
Bigger.
Bigger. And then doing the insulation like that was big too, cause like that way, cause gas bills aren't getting cheaper.
Well, and you're not gonna avoid it altogether, but you know, you always have the, sure, I'll support some affordable housing project, but please make sure it's nowhere near me. We get a little bit of that regardless, but the reason we designed them like this is so they look good and, you know, even though they're small, they just look like they belong here.
Well, plus it's set, so pride too. Just cause they're small, they're, they're really nice and so people can feel good. Say going into a trailer or an RV. They're going into something like, oh, that's, they'll feel, being smart with their money versus.
They're not gonna freeze like a rescue in the winter.
Right, right.
So where's all their parking? I think lots of these.
They're forty by forty lots. And so you have plenty of parking for parking and for tandem parking and for side-by-side parking. And the best thing about that product is, is they, they come with these certified containers. And these containers, then we turn them into storage units. So now that, even though they're smaller living spaces, you still have plenty of storage facility. And on some of these, we can turn this, the shipping container into the actual garage. So then you just sit it around the shipping container and then you have a full-on garage door that goes in, so it, it allows for, uh, more storage and overhead for cars.
And you get your door open in your car when you drive in?
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
You just, just drive a Prius.
You know, I used to be able to just.
Can't get out. You can't get out once you get in.
Just have to get in and out through the rear window.
And drive a hatchback.
You have to pull out, then push it in. So I noticed that some of these are certified containers, so they are having some issues with the certified containers in McCall right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta wait for.
I, we would never wanna have somebody live in one of them.
Yeah, no, that, this is just for like garages and things like that. Cause that's what we found with the, the containers, is since they're steel, you, you, they always get that radiant transfer. You get that moisture. Even if you put insulation sprayed in there, then you're gonna get moisture there and then it's gonna rust and then you're gonna get mold.
And then the heat loss is a whole nother process. Cause those, uh, Andy Dwelling in McCall, we checked it out after we talked about it the last time. And it was, what, fresh, fresh snow the day before?
Yeah, there was this much snow outside. There wasn't snow that far outside that building.
Cause the heat loss is so.
Going right outside.
They're not well done, no. And that's the other reason to have good, um, storage units. Because you gotta have storage units to port, to support this type of housing. It's just flat do.
And every lot would come with their own storage, so every, it would just come with the lot itself. And, and this, this, I, I haven't given my final revised plan. Our jury has finalized in that, but we have walking paths. We have more storage areas that are, that was just one I just printed off real quick for.
It's a great concept.
Jason, is there a credit for the storage units?
There's a river.
Uh, that's, I'm not sure how he's gonna do that on there as far as a credit, but I would assume.
The cost is around six grand for one of the units.
For the storage unit?
For the containers, yeah.
Yep. He's, he's asking, is there a credit if they don't use the storage unit?
Oh, I mean.
Guess we haven't thought of that, yeah.
Yeah. They don't want them to store in front of their house like this.
I was gonna say, you'll get junk outside if you don't make them use the storage.
If I don't have to have a storage unit next to it, I could put another one of these there instead of a storage unit.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
You could get twice as many houses with the same.
Well, yeah, so we set it up to where it's got its own storage area, kinda like it'll have its own, it'll separate area. It'll have its own, that's where you go to put your stuff if you wanna have it. Instead of it just being right next to one another, it'll just have a storage area. It'll have like, you know, a hundred of those.
Assigned doors.
None of these are furnished. They're just.
Exactly. They're not furnished. They have a, a deckless mini split. They have, they're all energy efficient and you can run it with your phone. You can walk in and run the whole thing with your phone. I've been with, working with Zipley. I already brought in fiber to my RV park and they're gonna bring in even more fiber for this project. So I've been working with them to really intensify the, the bandwidth. So then that way all these homes can be ran with their bandwidth.
You guys is taking all of our, our broadening.
On Saturdays and Sundays, we can't talk on the phone.
High speed fiber here by next year. Coming out of Star.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, that's gonna be exciting.
The guys in Washington with Zipley non-stop, cause I brought it to Whistlestop, then I brought it to Arrowhead and so I, and now their Zipley guys are living in Arrowhead, so. I'm like, guys.
Oh, you gotta buy the shorters now, don't you?
Yep.
They're, they're gonna have high speed here to hook into by next year, so the middle mile's getting improved. Um, so question, and this is something that's a national conversation, but our youth no longer have the ability to purchase a home and actually build wealth, which fifty years from now is gonna be darn scary when they have nothing in the bank. We were all able to do that through the purchase of real estate. So will there be, you're saying you're gonna sell part of these. Are you gonna try and sell them as individual lots with homes on them?
Correct. And that, that's exactly what I'm trying to do. Give back to Cascade with proof of residency for over a certain amount of time. That way they can start building equity in their home and not buying out of peak of the market. Um, and this is where I'm trying to work with Bud at Neighborhood Housing Authority down in Boise. Uh, you know, he, he's doing that land leases to help build equity that way. I've also been working with Northwestern Real Estate Corp with Noel Gill, who did the Northwest Passage in Donley. And so, you know, I'm trying to just fine tune how I can do it without not getting the government involved to where I can just still create the affordability factor and help the younger generation build wealth, cause I've got three sons and they, we live in Lake Fork right now, but how are they gonna buy houses without daddy and mommy's help? And I, I wanna be able to help them generate wealth and equity as we all got to growing up in, in our day and age.
Perfect. I'd love to hear that.
I own all kinds of stuff and I got twelve bucks in my wallet.
Yeah, I still, I still see you on the combine cutting grass there.
My life.
You got twelve more than I got.
So I guess where we'll go from here is we'll do some, some investigating on the ground of the land we got, Jason, and, and see how we can make this work. I'm even thinking, you know, our existing road department right now, but we're in the process of trying to move it out to Goldust, so I wanna go out there and look. Cause I know we're gonna have to do septic out there as well. We could combine it all in one big giant system.
Well, that'd be terrific.
So if we, if we purchased, what, a few of these there? How much are those a piece?
On the backside.
On the backside of that pavement.
Yep, backside there.
A hundred and ten thousand for a two-bedroom.
Yep.
Which is very inexpensive.
Really cheap.
Again, we tried, all the product we use, we try to make it, and that's, that's including foundation. That's our labor putting them together.
That's true.
Key, that's.
That's, yep. Yep.
We've done the inside stuff, the same, uh, super low maintenance, easy to install, you know, hit four less days as far as the testing materials.
You know, that LBT clip lock flooring and that sort of thing. We can have them with radiant floors in them. Just, we try to make it to where it's just a no-brainer, you know, and it, and also to make it to where it doesn't feel like a, again, like a, just a chintzy. Whatever. We want them to have something sweet, something nice.
Well, what else would we have to buy to turn one of these on? Are we talking fridge and dishwasher and all that stuff?
Appliances, yep.
There's gonna be a little cost there. Um, water heater, all that's included.
Yep, we, yep, and we, we can have them with tankless or with your standard one. We've been using the tankless just cause it's, again, more energy efficient.
Insta-hot.
Yeah, insta-hot stuff. Cause it's just that way you're not keeping a big tank of water hot. You're just.
Saves space.
Yeah, and the safe space too.
I think it's, I think it's important to note that if you buy a fifth wheel today that has similar square footage without the ability to service winter in Valley County, um, you're gonna pay a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for like square footage with like floor coverings. You know, so.
It's insane.
The, the, and, and I, I was just kind of looking over the weekend at various, various fifth wheel units, just so that I kinda had an idea of, of comparable cost. You know, if we can, if we can buy one of these, set it up, you know, put basic appliances in it for a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen thousand bucks onsite, hooked up, ready to go, ready to occupy. You're gonna end up with something that's gonna last us for quite a number of years. It's movable if we need to move it. Um, you know, and, and the cost associated with it's less than buying a trailer.
I mean, to be totally transparent, we're only, to do this, it's more on a volume thing. We're only doing, Sean and I are doing ten percent is our margin to make this work, which normal businesses should have a thirty percent margin. But we know if we can get this and, and also do something good for our community, it'll.
Like you said, repeat it.
And be able to repeat this over and over. And, and that's just the way we can make, you know, Jason, you know, Joe's come in with a great value on his side on the labor. And we're coming in, this is the only way to make it work. Cause if I start making another ten thousand and he starts making another ten thousand, now here we go again. You know, so we're just trying to do it at a value.
Where's your guys' timeline over here? Once you get approved and you start putting, put this on the ground, what's your timeline? Are you looking at?
Well, so if we can get the city attorney and my attorney to be on the same page and finalize that, that.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, I know.
Not gonna attorneys here.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, sorry, Brian. Forgot you were back there.
So if all goes well, I mean, I'd, I'd like to, at the end of September, start the horizontal. And so Granite Excavation's ready to go. They're already very privy of the project. They're excited for it because it's true affordable housing. They tried to bring affordable housing to their project, but it kinda just went a little bit higher than what they anticipated. So this one really fits that need. So they're ready to go. It'll be, save me a lot of money if they can do it in the fall, cause the water tables are lower. So then by the time snow melts next year, we'll have already ordered the kits. They'll already be here and we can start just popping them in April, May of next year.
That's kind of our goal too, is when we're doing them, if we stage them right, let's say, let's say we're doing ten units. And let's say you needed to do your horizontal work. We can go get, go ahead and get the kits there and start building the actual structure onsite. And then by the time you're done with your horizontal, then we can just set the vertical and now we're making, boom, 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 instead of waiting horizontal, then going vertical. And I think it's, I think you're allowed the one move to still be real property.
Where do those get converted, yeah?
So that way we, as long as it's built on the staging area, on that same piece of dirt.
So Joe, what are you gonna do to make them long-term? You doing restricting anything? Because if I'm a smart investor, I'm gonna come in and I'm gonna buy all, all of them you have for sale.
And so that's where proof of residency, you have to show proof. And so they're, we're gonna go through a vetting period. You know, I'm, I've actually got some seasonal RVers that have been there since Gerald built it. And so I actually have them on a board, advisory board, so then they can help understand who's moving in there, who's gonna be able to buy them. I'm gonna retain the other ones just for rentals or leases with the county, because I don't want that to happen. I don't want someone to come in and just buy them and Airbnb them out and then my community starts going, you know, south. So I, I have amenities. As you can see, I've got yoga facilities, swimming pool, hot tubs, fitness centers. I mean, it's really designed to be a cool community and not, you know, this, oh, I don't want it in my backyard. It's affordable housing, cause it's not being funded by anybody but myself and a bank. So that's where I think this is gonna be a whole different factor for Valley County than, than what we see now.
But could you, like what, based on what she asked, on the, on the ones you're gonna do the individual parcels and sell those off?
Correct.
Could you put a, some sort of moratorium or deed restriction on each one, so no matter who buys them?
Yeah.
And they can't then sell it for five hundred grand the next day?
Correct.
Cause then we perpetuate the same problem we already have.
Sure. So these come in on a, on a trailer? Are you site building? What do they, what do you have?
I've got a truck.
Yeah, so we have, we have a bunch of different, depending on where we're doing it. We can either have them panels, so where they're, the panels are completely done with the power and water and all that in the panels. We can have them to where they're done as a, just like a mobile home type deal, um, or we can, um, or we can have them in a, what, I have a foldable style. The accordion out. And, uh, really the panel way is the best way to go, cause then we have our, our floor system, let's say it's sixteen foot wide, it's eight foot by thirty-nine feet long. The floor's already pre-plumbed and everything. You just set them down on those, on the strong ties. There's one eight foot, another eight foot, then the wall's done. Set the wall up. So you can have one of these dried in. I mean, they're a three to fifteen day process to build one. Once onsite.
Sheetrock, that's everything.
That's everything. Yeah, cause the walls are done inside now. They're already done.
Seriously?
Yep.
Pre-wired and everything.
For the ones that aren't gonna be on permanent, we might have to leave interior walls exposed if they're gonna be, have a rough inspection or like a regular CBO.
So it makes it really nice, cause you can have it dried in it for a couple hours. It's pretty slick deal. It only took us four years to get it figured out, but we got her.
I knew the Idaho engineering stamp now.
Yep.
Well, yeah, on the ones that we've done, but we've done new models ever since then, so.
Yeah, but the ones of five twelve and that'll have stamped. And we have, I don't know if you've ever heard of Joe at HECO, but he's a forensic structure engineer. And he's picky, but he's, he's made it really good. Uh, yeah, cause every time you do it, it's like, so we had a guy stamp off on it and we had, found out about this guy and had him look at it and he found about twenty different things that needed to be improved.
His report was a hundred and sixty pages of what we had to build.
For a, for a six hundred square foot house.
I'm like, how's it going?
Now we know what's right.
I had to hear the tone before I delayed and we delivered the hundred and sixty new pages of fun.
I understand your pain.
Yep.
Yeah. Home building.
Kirby, you brought together a heck of a team.
Yes, thank you so much, Kirby.
I'm the, I'm the weak spot.
I'm alive, I'm the new guy in this ship here.
Well, thanks you guys for coming in. Who's saying we got some work to do on our side?
Yeah, just let me know.
A little time.
If you want us to look at some of the pieces once you decide where you wanna nose around, we'd love to, because we, he would, he's like an engineer by brain and so he had ideas none of us have ever.
So the one at Tackle Toms is one you did?
Correct.
We could go buy one.
Those are the ones on wheels, so that, yeah, not the same.
And that's a base model, which is just a stripped down model, but yeah.
I just told them to hurry and get one in here as soon as I bought Tackle Tom, so I could just start showcasing. And we sold it like that already, and so they're coming to pick it up and we got more coming. We've got this one coming up as well that I'm gonna start showcasing. So then now people can see what product is coming to Valley County or city of Cascade until Valley County approves, you know, that moving forward, but one city you find all of the approvals.
Those are different than these.
Correct, yeah. So this one, and you can see the interior of this one as well. These ones are slick. I'm putting these on the river. They're great. You know, two bedrooms, uh, with the, with the loft, once they put them with the loft. I mean, these'll rent out all year round on the river.
Those ones, can you do these, make them like two-story?
You can.
We have to engineer for that.
Just have to change the engineering, but we can go up to, on our multifamily, we can go up to six stories high.
Is it an outside stairwell?
Uh, we can do it however, whichever way you wanna go with them.
I don't know how you do inside.
Well, we just have to design it for it.
Oh, these are the containers that you should rent. Oh, I envisioned this big giant conics.
So most of these are similar floor plans. We just had a lot of.
The red doors.
Yeah, correct.
You can do the bigger doors, the smaller doors.
You wanna talk to one?
I'm good.
This is a two-bedroom?
Yep.
I'm gonna stay today than I have.
Yep. Yeah, we have them with garage doors on the sides. It's, that roll up, like this, it's a glass garage door on it. Without, uh, uh, window with the bar stools and that sort of thing.
I'm out here for.
That's right, we're kidding, right?
Need a nap earlier.
I'll be out there.
It's just like a foot and a mile away.
It's got a bit, well, it's got a master. Yeah, it's got a bedroom here.
And also comes with two.
Universe last weekend, ready.
And we just put a loft above this, so this is a loft too.
Yeah, I'd say it's a great idea, we've been talking for a long time, it's a great idea, just maybe find the point of pulling the trigger and doing something.
You can see the, these are uh, pictures on the inside of it, so it's that same floor, but here's.
August fourteen, but again, that's just the master facilities plan, right, that's.
I mean, the appliances.
Yeah.
I mean, the whole bathroom is nice, it's not just some shoddy hardwood bathroom.
One, that's other thing, my, my other company's called EcoWare, so all of these come with odorless toilets, so you can have like gas station burrito bad day, nobody'll smell it.
Like it's, it's an odor-free toilet, it's just, it's got a worldwide patent on it.
Yeah, it's got a fancy on the purple cracker.
Where's that?
Yeah. Sorry, I forgot about that part. Can you strike that for the record?
The other thing, I think we talked about this, you guys need to sell these things also.
Yeah, we've got a few people.
Yeah, we're doing uh, seven of them in, in Boise right now.
Okay, around?
You've got ground down.
This is the one you were talking about having a loft in?
Yeah, yeah, correct. Yeah, it's just right above here, I thought.
He's got pictures of it on his phone.
And then we're doing a Cabarton unit, so using the shed, we're gonna do the gable, this, this stuff.
And just so you know, it's actually C.A. Barton.
Oh.
It's the gut original guy that came into the valley, three hundred and hundred, I don't know what C.A. stands for, I've tried to find out.
Really?
Over the years, it was just kinda smashed together as a Cabarton.
He knew him personally.
C.A. Barton was his name.
Eighteen hundreds, that way?
Well, yeah, that's when I had teeth going.
I think the only way, I think the only way you get there, sure, is to.
I really appreciate you guys, you understand, you do, he's been walking us through some stuff over the years, and like, we need to do this.
Well, you guys, if it's okay, I think we're done, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, and we can stand around and look at this and talk. So Doug, consider us adjourned.
You guys are doing awesome.
Well, I have anything else.